I wanted to say how hard you worked on it, but I didn't want to. So I'll ask Kess.
Why don't you say during the meeting, that'd be awesome.
Hello.
You glad you were on vacation?
Um, we call the county council meeting to order. This is Marco Hattner has the, uh, what?
Allegiance to fly United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a, uh, point of information for everyone. Approval of the minutes. Anyone make a motion?
Local call?
I'm sorry, local call.
Mr. Cusick?
Present.
Mr. Deetz?
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Mr. Lot?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Fargo Hattner?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Rinsky?
Here.
All present, Mrs. Ferraro by phone.
Thank you. This is a problem, I have four things in my head, three of them get lost. What we're gonna do is, as we go forward, we're gonna have a presentation. Approval of the minutes. I'm so anxious to give a little speech, right? Isn't that the problem?
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, can I say it now?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, uh, what I think we'll do is, uh, we're gonna have a presentation by the Airport Authority, then we're gonna have courtesy of the floor, and then we're gonna have the County Executive Report. And I know there's some questions for our, um, election machine folks, and that will be the first item under old business. And if anybody has any questions from the county's perspective, the County Executive will be getting up to give his report, and you could ask him. And then when it's, when he's finished, then it'll be just council and the company, if there are any questions for the company. So, if we're all okay, let's move on to the presentation by the Airport Authority.
Good evening. My name is Tom South, I'm the Executive Director of the Airport Authority, and it's certainly my pleasure to be here this evening to provide a brief update, um, and status of the airport and the airport system. And so just wanted to walk through a few slides, uh, give you a little bit of update, opportunity for questions if there are any. One of the things I wanted to start off with is the fact that, uh, this is our 90th anniversary for ABE. A lot of, uh, great information, including, uh, the fact that Amelia Earhart actually landed at, at ABE way back in 1929, so just a really rich history, setting the stage for, um, your neighborhood airport, and just kind of a, a list of some of the things I wanted to touch on as we walk through the presentation this evening. In terms of our strategic framework, we've covered this previously, but our, our vision is to be the best regional airport system in North America, and our mission, while it's a long one, goes back to, to really making sure that our community, uh, here is, uh, the place that business and residents want to be. And I think that still holds true for us, and, and we stand by, um, the lot, the, the great work that the staff does for this. In order to get there, uh, we have a number of strategic focus areas. Air service, you see, is at the top of the list, but there's a number, uh, of these elements, and financial sustainability, we'll touch on, customer experience, uh, our facilities, uh, operational safety, and our organization itself. In terms of the airport, we're still the fourth largest, uh, commercial service airport in the state of Pennsylvania. Uh, four passenger airlines continue to fly there, three legacy carriers, and one ultra-low-cost carrier, Allegiant, 13 non-stop destinations, uh, 800,000 passengers moved through the airport last year, so about 792, 14 and a half percent increase over 2017. So, again, continuing to see growth, air cargo, uh, about a little over 200 million pounds. In terms of our audit report, I think one of the things that we really take a lot of pride in is preparing our own financials for this audit. Time was, we didn't do that, we really owned this process in-house, and I think if you look on the slide, you'll see the last four years, uh, no findings. So in addition to that clean audit, absolutely no findings, which is, I think, um, really a testament to the staff. As we look at air service, again, one of those strategic focus areas, we're looking at 24 months, uh, through September at this point, of consecutive passenger growth. So just a really, uh, wonderful achievement for this community, for this, uh, asset. What's interesting, the 2019 year-to-date number, uh, runs us through September, so that's only the first three quarters of the year we've had 690,000 passengers moving through ABE. What's remarkable about that is in 2017, we had a total of 690,000 passengers, uh, for the entire year. So we've already met that mark from just two years ago. So again, strong performance, we're already up 16% year-to-date, and you can see, uh, this is not all about Allegiant. Uh, when you look at American Airlines leading the charge at a 30% increase this year, um, everyone has a, a stake here in terms of this growth, and that's, uh, really fantastic news. As you look at our non-stop destinations, seven by Allegiant, three American, two each for, uh, Delta and United, but, uh, you'll, you'll see Nashville and Savannah Hilton Head, uh, two new destinations that we announced this year. So great new service from Allegiant. And also Chicago with American, so now we have United and Chicago both routed through Ameri-, uh, with American and, and United, excuse me, going through O'Hare. And both of those, uh, you know, are very popular routes for both carriers and continue to, to do very well. One of the announcements that we made last year, very exciting for us, is a crew base. So starting February 12th of next year, we will see Allegiant establish a crew base, and that means 60 new high-wage, uh, jobs right here in the Lehigh Valley. We're talking about pilots, we're talking about mechanics, flight attendants, flight crew members, so really exciting. We also heard when Allegiant made this announcement that there's more destinations coming for, for our community. We don't know what those are at this point, but we're excited to, to hear what those options might be. So we're gonna stay tuned and, and, uh, get excited about kind of what's around the corner. And in terms of speaking about what's around the corner, we have, uh, just announced this week, a new project, and this is, uh, something that's desperately needed for the facility. Currently, if, um, everyone has flown through ABE, they're familiar with our checkpoint configuration down through a tunnel in the lower part of the concourse. There are just room for two screening lanes for the TSA in that area. As of 2017, if you remember how we're trending on these numbers, that's two years ago, we needed three screening lanes. So you can see, we're already kind of working at a deficit, and so the key here is widening this checkpoint and bringing it above grade, so no longer having to go down underground through the tunnel, but bridging over top and above grade and directly into, uh, the wily post-concourse. So much fewer vertical transitions, certainly important for folks who, uh, with ADA concerns, we wanna make sure that we're family-friendly. So very important that we're really reducing the number of transitions in the, in that complex flow, and also really increasing capacity. As we keep hearing about Allegiant crew bases and, and growth, we wanna make sure we can, we can accommodate for that. It was almost the bigger announcement was Dunkin'. I can't believe the popularity of this one on social media, but people were very excited about Dunkin'. So we have a new kiosk, uh, beyond this, the screening checkpoint, where you can, uh, get a full menu from Dunkin'. And, uh, if you look really close, I think you could even see one of the council members, Ms. Rinsky, uh, was available, uh, for us on, on that event. Also, a smart market, a real grab-and-go option. Again, remember that our concessions do not, uh, normally are not staffed 24 hours, so people moving throughout the terminal, delayed flights, we have options for grab-and-go, very healthy options, and I think that's a great amenity. I would be remiss if I didn't say something about Real ID while I'm here. We have less than a year to go. If your license, your driver's license does not have a gold star on it, you cannot get past any security screening checkpoint anywhere in the country if you wanna fly domestically. The only way you can do that is to have a passport or a passport card. That begins October 1st, 2020. And, uh, airports across the Commonwealth, I sit on the Aviation Council of Pennsylvania Board, and we are all, uh, working very diligently to make sure our communities understand the importance of this requirement. In terms of non-aeronautical revenue and fi- financial sustainability, making sure that the airport is self-sustaining, we continue to look at, uh, development, uh, on airport property. We've talked for some time about some development in Hanover-Northampton, uh, working with Majestic Realty. That process is continuing, we're working in the final stages now of two, uh, very large agreements that we spent a lot of time with Majestic, fine-tuning. I think we'll see those, uh, moving forward a little bit more, uh, late this year, possibly early next year. And what will really take some time after that is RFA review. So once those are, uh, brought to the board, they will move on to the FAA for their review and approval. The second piece to non-aeronautical development is actually, uh, right on airport property. And what we're talking about here is the potential for a hotel and some other retail development, and maybe a convenience store, restaurant, we're still working through the logistics of that. Certainly a lot of demand studies done by our master plan for the airport, as well as independent studies have shown a, a, a real need for hotels, hotel room space in this corridor, so really important for us to make sure we're meeting that demand, and I think we've got some interesting opportunities right on property here. So continue to explore those with, uh, high hotels. In terms of Brayden, uh, we had a really fun event August 17th. This was our movie at the airpark, and, um, yes, we did show planes, it seemed appropriate, and, um, it was really a great event. And one of the things that we were also able to do as part of this was to give free plane rides. So we had a number of folks, um, out here for this community event, fireworks at the end, which we got a lot of great compliments on those, uh, but 108 children were able to get free plane rides. And this is just something that, um, is donated, there is no cost to do this, but it really is an opportunity to get the community engaged. There continues to be, um, a shortage in pilots in our industry, a shortage in aircraft mechanics in this industry, short of, of, of airport management professionals like myself in this industry. The more people I can get thinking about aviation and realizing it can be right here in your backyard as a career, uh, I think is a, is a fantastic opportunity for us. In terms of the businesses at, at Brayden Airpark that we brought in in August of last year, they're both doing very well. Pro Flight Aero Services is our flight school. Currently, 12 pilots as students, about 30 pilots have been moving through that program. So, again, talking about training and educating and licensing that next generation of pilots that the, the commercial side of the, uh, business still desperately needs, very important. Spirit Wings Aviation, also very, uh, active at Brayden in terms of their aircraft maintenance facility and, and continuing to grow, and, um, gosh, here we're working outside on the ramp, which is good, they ran out of hangar space, so that's a good problem to have. Our terminal, if you recall, we did remove the formerly, um, uh, decommissioned terminal, so that previous building was in place, it was really unusable. Uh, the top photo shows us removing that building, and that was part of the, uh, grant that we received from the county, if you recall that. So what we see here, uh, is an actual plan, we have money, uh, from the State Bureau of Aviation, and they're gonna match for a permanent replacement to this facility. The great thing about this is, we received a lot of fun, uh, stakeholder input, tenant input about what this space should do and how it should be configured, but ultimately then how this space could actually serve the community for meetings, uh, you name it, activities that we can, again, get people to the airpark. I think it's very important that we can do this for the community. Speaking of the community, a couple of other events that we, um, try to work with some, some local agencies, the, uh, Group Equilibrium, again, raising money for that with a polo match, and according to the Bureau of Aviation in the state, we're the only airpark or airport in the Commonwealth that has a polo match on it. And so, uh, we always have to get special permission to do events like these through our licensing agency, the Bureau, and, um, we were able to do that, about 800 folks attended that. The other thing that, uh, if we rewind to the federal shutdown in the very beginning of this year, uh, we actually held a fill-the-bus event. And the community outreach from this event was just incredible. Uh, the federal workers incredibly moved by the outreach of the community. We were hoping to fill this bus once, maybe twice, we filled that bus seven times, and that was our community that did that. So just incredible, incredible support. Uh, last but not least, um, looks like I'm wearing the same suit, it's because I am. We actually were at the Chambers Annual Meeting today, and the Lehigh Valley International Airport actually won Business of the Year. And I really, uh, thank a couple of staff members in attendance, Colin Rieckbahn, Todd Kwan, but it's really a tribute to the staff and the support that we have in terms of the team that it takes to put this organization together. They do an amazing job, uh, I get to stand up here and take credit for that, but it's really about the team. And so I just, I thank them, I, and I thank the support of the, uh, the county, certainly councillor, uh, member Zarinsky and County Executive McClure, uh, just been very important to have this support, uh, for your neighborhood airport, for Brayden, and making sure that we're doing everything we can to promote aviation in, in the system here. So, uh, our next meeting is scheduled for November 26th at noon. We've been in a little bit of a flux right now, our boardroom is being moved and reconfigured, so as we're doing that, we're not having our meetings at the airport. We hope to be back online the first of the year, so looking at January to be back onsite with our board meetings. I know that's been a little bit challenging as we've, you know, kind of looked for venues for our, our, our board, but, uh, here's the location, certainly more information at, at flylvia.com. And that concludes, uh, the presentation I had. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions that he'd be happy to answer?
Mr. Cusick?
Just briefly, I noticed you referred to it as ABE, thank you. Let's get rid of that LVIA, there is no such moniker. And, in addition to that, my other questions are the, uh, the flight to Toronto, uh, any chance of that coming back?
So, uh, that was certainly a popular flight, uh, really one of those, uh, elements that was brought to us by a turboprop aircraft, and by and large, turboprop aircraft from the system are gone. And so, it's not to say that we, we don't have other options to look at service, and we do still hear about that Toronto service, so it's not off the radar when we, when we go to air service development, uh, discussions with our carriers and our partners, but, uh, at this point, we don't have anything on the horizon.
And then, uh, Puerto Rico or the Dominican Republic?
Sure. Um, we, we continue to look at options, um, and I will say that, uh, you know, certainly looking at Puerto Rico is a very interesting option, when you look at the statistics of the number of flyers from our market area heading in that direction. It continues to be a very important conversation that we have, uh, with a number of carriers, but, uh, at this point, we don't have any, any ideas about when that might come to pass.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions? We have our resident aviation, if ever I have a problem or question, I go to our, uh, resident aviation expert, Mr. Deetz?
No, I, I mean, uh, things are good, and actually I was at the MBAA out in Vegas two weeks ago and, and attended one of the breakout sessions, which is, uh, i- is your airport working for the community, and, and so, uh, I attended that, and it was nice to see that actually the airport was already doing, you know, checking a lot of the boxes that, that they were saying, so it was pretty neat to, to see there, so, good job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And I know one thing had been, people ask me, and I went to Mr. Deetz, and he confirmed it, but you're here, and it's a public meeting. Allegiant, I know there's been stories in the past about Allegiant as a lot, a carrier with the planes and the condition of their aircraft, and he told me that the planes, the aircraft flying out of ABE are the new, are not the ones that were involved in some of the issues, I think 60 Minutes did a report, and...
Yes, I do recall some information about that before.
Was it very flattering to Allegiant?
Wasn't flattering, and I think, um, the takeaway for us was, you know, number one, that Allegiant has retired all of the, uh, McDonnell Douglas aircraft that we were referring to, so they have an all Airbus fleet at this point. Uh, so I think that's really the issue, I think, uh, a number of, uh, if you do a little bit of research, you will find that there's an opportunity to poke holes in that study, and we have every confidence in Allegiant, they've, they've done a phenomenal job over the 14 years they've been here.
Well, you know, it's, it's a matter of perception, and, and, uh, even if it's, I agree, I'm, it's not always accurate, but, you know, people, especially if we're getting in a metal tube and going 30,000 feet in the air, perception can carry a lot of weight.
Absolutely, absolutely, safety's paramount.
But, uh, Mr. Deetz assured me, I can just, uh, take half a sleeping pill and go to sleep, and I'll be fine. Okay, any other questions for the airport? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you all, thank you very much for your support. We did leave copies of our 2018 annual report for you to take a look at, and if there's any questions, always feel free to, to reach out to us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, up, we have, um, courtesy of the floor. In courtesy of the floor, I had three individuals sign up, uh, we, if, the first individual was here when we had a committee meeting, but she left. So we have, we'll have her registered for the, for the minutes. But, uh, the, the next name would be Michael Deluzio. Mr. Deluzio, if you could just repeat your name and address for them.
Please. Hi, uh, Mike Deluzio, uh, 2011 Poplar Lane in Allentown. So, uh, I'm here, I wanted to talk to you real quick, uh, there's an ordinance that's proposed that, uh, I'll talk to you again later when that comes up, but, uh, um, myself and my buddy Sam over there, are Sunblust Holdings, we own 150 South Union Street, which is something that'll come up later in this meeting. The county owns 152 South Union, which is the other half. During our, uh, talks back and forth at the solicitor's office, which will come up later, we've asked that 152's roof be, uh, addressed. I have a picture that we took a couple hours ago.
Excuse me, I don't wanna interrupt, but you have five minutes then, and, and you will have the opportunity when the ordinance comes up.
And this is unrelated to that.
Oh, that's fine. I just wanted to let you know what the time for the...
We reached out during those negotiations or talks before, uh, about having the roof secured. It's obvious that the roof's been in disrepair on the county's half for years. Our half is occupied, the same male that foreclosed on it, that lived there for decades, still resides there. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that it hasn't been addressed. Regardless of what happens with the condemnation, there's, he's obviously going to live there for some amount of time, and I think, uh, there's a potential that it could become a hazard on the county's half if it's not addressed. All that we ask is some plywood and a tarp be applied to the roof, just like any other roof that was damaged in a storm, or something like that. I had a picture that I took a couple hours ago, there's about a, I don't know, 10 by five-foot hole in the roof, so it's obvious that didn't happen yesterday or the day before, it's an ongoing issue. So we've reached out, we haven't gotten any response on that, that's what I wanted to bring attention to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, the next individual who signed up is Sandy O'Brien. You know the procedure.
Good to see all of you. Sandy O'Brien Warner, 705 Paxtonos Avenue, Easton.
Thank you.
I know there, I know one person here is not surprised to see me after Tuesday. First, I want to commend the election staff for their painstaking work, uh, to mitigate the problems caused by the voting machines on Tuesday. And as I did stand outside 32 for the entire day, and I re- talked to a lot of people, received information over the phone and online, I wanted to bring some of these problems directly to you. I'll be using first names. Betty, Northampton County, 42, Green Pond Methodist, problems with straight party vote and voting at the bottom of the screen. Also noted, very difficult to check out, uh, to check the printout because it was dark. Helen, Williams Township, no instructions from the poll workers, she was handed a printout paper and left to her own devices to figure this out. Bev from Butts, wherever Butts is, I don't know. This is a personal, that personal, um, note from her, found the printout difficult to read, hard to correlate the voting choices with the, uh, categories. As a poll watcher, she heard many grumblings about how hard it was to vote and observed abnormally long lines, up to 35 minutes. Frank from College Hill, you know we have three in College Hill, so I don't know if Frank's at mine or some other. The worker scuffed at him when he told them he had difficulty voting. Um, that's not what I found at 32, but, I don't think it was 32, somewhere else. Carol at 32 on College Hill, difficulty pressing the yes/no buttons for incumbent judges. Angie at Faith Lutheran Church Forks, unfortunately, she voted straight ticket and ended up with votes in the, both DNR columns, that happened a lot, and found voting for judge retentions difficult. Roger from Williams Middle, reported only one machine working for a period of time. Baron from another place, unknown to me, noted that Abe Cassis had only six votes reported initially, and later morning call reported 94. Jennifer from downtown, they, found the printed confirmation sheet hard to read, um, she had read what, read what I had put online about pressing the names on the text instead of the boxes, and she was able to get her votes through pretty well that way, she knew not to go straight, uh, straight Democrat or Republican at that point. Now, I was at 32, and I was outside the whole day except for lunch, and I voted there. A lot of people had trouble with the straight ticket splitting on either side. The bottom, the buttons on the right and bottom sides of the screen were temperamental at best, impossible for some. Quite a few voters actually came out and told me they just didn't do the judges at all, that they could not do it. One person reported that his finger was about that far from the name, and it lit up, didn't even touch it. That's weird. Again, the printout was difficult to read, the candidates in the offices did not line up, you probably saw that too. Second hand from a banger poll worker, despite the large Democratic turnout, there were three Democratic candidates for school director who had no votes, Scott Minnick, Lorraine Brands, I think, and Kimberly Gamble. I'm hoping that was, uh, I hope that was fixed in the end. Anyway, so I have read and heard, uh, heard the presser yesterday, I, I didn't get the impression that maybe you were aware of how many problems there were out there, I could have brought a whole lot more. I was on the Republican, I was on the Republican, uh, county Facebook and webs, websites, and a lot of people, they were also saying the same thing. But the crux of the matter of this is that we need to trust these machines. Even now, are we to know that these numbers are accurate? Because of Abe Cassis, we knew that there was some immense problem, but you know, it could, it could be something smaller, 5 to 6% could be wrong every time, and we would not really maybe know it. Now, we could count on Matt Muncy, he's got, he's got the numbers brain, he can usually tell us what it should be, but if it's a small discrepancy, no one should miss a vote, and no one's vote should not be counted. And so, to feel confident, we do have to really do something about this, and as I'm looking at research on this company, I'm finding that since 2008, they still have not discovered what's wrong with their machines. They're still in litigation in some places. They have lost hundreds of thousands of votes here and there, and then 16,000 or 18,000 other places. This is not acceptable. I stood before you twice before, as did a lot of other people, and said, please don't get these machines. And now I, I feel, I'm frantic about this, because here they are, $2.8 million, I'm out of time.
No, on the issue of, uh, sorry about that, it's timer. On the issue of these machines, um, yeah, I'm gonna exec, uh, administrative, uh, president's privilege, my prerogative.
You take it.
Take an extra minute, uh, to summarize.
Actually, I, I'm at the bottom.
Because, uh, anybody that speaks on machines, you're basically gonna get six.
No, we, I think, but I think our county people deserve the best, we deserve to know that we can trust what's going on, and that our votes are going to be counted. That's all. Thanks very much.
Thank you. No one else signed up, is there anyone else who would like to come up and address council over any issue? Seeing no one, we will move on to the County Executive Report. Do you have a report, Mr. Executive?
I, I do, but I, I think it's probably best that, um, we, uh, dispense with, uh, the, the vast majority of what I had to say tonight, and just get to, uh, the point. We had an election on Tuesday. I believe the unofficial results are lawful, accurate, fair, and I believe when the canvas is completed and the official results, um, are tallied, you will see that they match the, the legal, lawful, and accurate results that were, uh, tabulated, uh, through the night, on Tuesday night into Wednesday morning, and I think the results of this election will ultimately be certified. That's a credit to the fact that you had a, uh, paper ballot. The paper ballot, um, we are so fortunate, uh, that we have a paper ballot backup in, uh, in this regard, because we know who won. There demonstrate, uh, that there weren't discrepancies. But with that being said, the fact is, we had an election, we have unofficial results, those results, I believe, will stand up in canvas and be certified. I think Mr. Cusick thinks his results are good. Your, your results good, sir?
I hope so.
Okay, yeah, I think they are. The, uh, all kidding aside, um, with the fact that I do believe that we had an election, we have results that will be certified and lawful. we have results that will be certified and lawful. E S and S let us down. They let us down. There were problems. Ms. O'Brien Warner is right. There was difficulty voting that retention race. Although I don't know how many votes Judge Corey would have got for retention if there weren't difficulties voting in that. But the fact of the matter is people had difficulty with that section of the screen. That's something that's unacceptable, and E S and S has to fix that. They need to fix that before the next primary election. Ms. O'Brien Warner talked about hypersensitivity of the screen. I experienced that myself. I did. Fortunately, I was over the people I wanted to vote for, and those votes were cast accurately, and I had an opportunity, as I'm sure she did, and to verify her paper ballot, make sure the people that she wanted to vote for were voted for. And as an interesting aside, and I didn't say yesterday in my press conference, everyone who had come to me or I was aware of during the day who had some kind of issue, I asked, "Did you look at your paper ballot after you finished voting?" And to a person, they all said, "Yes, I did." And then I asked, "Did you vote for the people you wanted to vote for?" And to a person, they all got to vote for the people they wanted to vote for. So I was heartened by that. Although I understand there may have been other people who might not have. But I think at the end of the day, when you look at the vote totals, they make a lot of sense. There were races that made sense to me based on my experience. The District 3 race made sense to me. The District 4 race, in a partisan manner, made sense to me. I think Mr. Dietz agrees with me about that, the totals. The outcome makes logical sense. But the lodestar of the race that made the most sense to me was the controllers' race. Because I think the controllers' race was the same as it's been for the last three races. I mean, that race just does not move that much. It's right there, and that one made a lot of sense. The outcome of the judge race and the district attorney race, although I realize it's not evidence of anything, was consistent with internal polling from the campaigns that I am personally aware of. So again, it's not evidence of anything, but it passed the psych test for me. None of that, though, excuses the fact that we weren't able to, at the end of the night, count votes for the people in the cross-filed races. It's unacceptable, inexcusable. We still don't know why. I don't think they're going to be able to tell you why tonight. The machines are impounded. We're not going to let them get into them until after the entire process, the elections process takes place. So I'm not sure we're going to have an answer until we have the election finished. We won't know, because we're not letting them at the machines. That's just, we'll just have to wait for that process to play out. But they have to get that fixed. We can't have, you know, we can't have the machines registering no votes for candidates because they were in cross-filed races. Now, it seems, at least, that all of the problems were in cross-filed races. There weren't any tabulation problems in any of the other races, to my knowledge. Either candidates who were cross-filed in judicial races or where there was a candidate nominated by both parties. That next candidate, for some reason, registered zero. I don't know why. They don't know why yet. I don't think they're going to be able to tell you tonight. But we'll find out, and we'll get an answer, and they need to fix it. It's unacceptable that that happened. And, you know, they let us down. E S and S let us down. We paid them $2.8 million, and we did not get the value for what we paid for. And I let you down. I let you down. My administration, working in conjunction with the Elections Commission, brought this machine to you, and then I brought it to you. I let you down, and I'm sorry. We'll do better. With that, I'd like to introduce Adam Carbelito, who's the Senior Vice President from E S and S. Mr. President, is that okay?
We're going to divide...
You want to ask me some questions?
We're going to divide the sessions into two, because when you're done, then you're done, administration.
Thank you.
Then he's going to answer for himself without you necessarily...
Thank you, sir.
...adding anything. So are there any questions for Mr. McClure from council regarding, from the county's standpoint? And I mean certainly if, when he's up, if something comes up. It's not like this iron gate. He can't come up. But, I mean, they're going to have to answer for themselves in some way. Does anybody have any questions for the executive? Yes. Mr. McGee.
The state's involved in it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how long will the machines be impounded?
20 days at least.
Okay. And are...
And that's the state statute, by the way, at the conclusion of any election. But there's also a court order, which we agreed to, to impound them for 20 days. We don't want there to be any question.
Thank you.
That's why I won't let them at them. They want to get at the machines. They are dying to figure out what happened, and you can't blame them for that. It's very important to their business. But the first thing, I know that we have lawful, I believe we have lawful, accurate, fair results, and that's the most important thing to me, getting this election done, not them figuring this out. That will be the next most important thing.
Mr. Lot?
Yeah, and I think we all agree this is unacceptable. I mean, this is one of the core functions of us. Moving forward, how do we guarantee that this company is going to be able to guarantee us this never happens again? I mean, I have no faith in them. I mean, I listened to their presentation and believed them, and now we had this issue. I know you can't answer this question, but we have to guarantee the voters that this will not happen again. And that's where we have to end up at the end of this. And I don't really know the way we're going to get there, but that's where we got to get to.
Well, I think what we do is we get through this election, because like I said, I think we'll get official results that'll be certified, and we'll have winners, and they'll take office. And then they need to get into the machines, and they need to figure out what happened, and they need to come back here and tell you in front of everybody what happened. And only then can you then even begin to consider building up confidence again in what they're doing.
Mr. Warner?
I want to, I respect the fact that Mr. McClure...
It's fine.
I'm sorry, were you, did you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
I respect the fact that the county executive and his administration are accepting the abject failure of this. The last thing we want to hear after we spend $2.9 million is that the paper ballots worked, okay? That's not what we wanted to hear. The next thing we didn't want to hear is they're going to fix it. And I can't discuss, I'm not going to discuss it right now. Wait till later on. But I am one of the people that believes that you either find and fix a machine's software concerns or we decide what to do with the current machines and our $2.9 million investment to get it back. Because I do know that some screens in the past in different states have been returned for the same issues that were brought up during that program that we talked about in April. And I will address some of the things I have as facts and noted later on. But I wanted you to know that I respect the fact you fell on the sword for this, okay?
Well, it's not just falling on the sword. And I would gently disagree with your premise that it was an abject failure. There were problems. There certainly were problems. An abject failure would have been not having paper ballots to count so that we know that Mr. Cusick is returning to county council. That, in my view, would be an abject failure. So I know you...
Mine, too.
Sir, I know you don't want to hear it, but I'm glad we had the, I'm glad we had the paper backup.
So I know that the votes were counted through the paper ballots that night, and the unofficial votes were distributed the next day. So what's the process by which the state is going to verify those, and where are the votes now?
They're here. They're impounded. And it's the same process that's done in every election. There'll be a canvas. There'll be a certification.
So somebody from the state will come in?
No, the state's not involved. We do that at the county level.
Oh, okay.
But we're in constant contact with the Department of State, and we have been throughout the process.
So what's different between the unofficial count, where you've counted the paper ballots, and the canvas?
Because you have the representatives watching the elections officials canvass the vote that occurred on election night, which will start tomorrow. So at this point, these, yeah, these results are unofficial.
But the...
Until the canvas is complete.
But from what I understand, the counting of the ballots that night, the election night, it was supervised as well?
Yes, but that was, on election night, that is an unofficial count.
Okay.
The count does not become official until the canvas is complete, and the canvas can take days. So they're going to look at, they're going to go through the, whatever the... And I don't know the mechanics of it, because I'm not counting the votes. But the voter registration folks and the elections officials will be doing that over the next several days.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to know how that was going to play out.
Are there any other questions for the executive? I guess the only, I have a question. Is the registrar, the voter registrar here tonight?
Is Amy here? No, she's not.
That's unfortunate. It's very unfortunate.
Well, do you want her? She's working.
I mean, I would think, given what hap... Well, she may be working, but this is working, too. I mean, I'm just a little disappointed that I think anybody would...
We're not trying to hide her from you. Is she here? Go get her.
I didn't say you're trying to hide her. It's just forethought. I thought she should be here.
Well, you said it's unfortunate she's not here, which implies we were trying to hide her. We're not, sir. She's coming.
I'm not implying it. This isn't a courtroom. I know you're a lawyer. This isn't a courtroom. This is a serious matter, though, and I think everybody involved has to be here. She should have known to be here. That's my only point. As a councilman, whether you were here or another executive, I would have said the same thing. We are not always treated the way I think council should be treated, and that upsets me sometimes. Because we're responsible. You fell on the sword. You did the right thing. You did exactly what you had to do. But when people came out and they saw the patch on my shirt, you know, it happened to wear my county thing, I was getting hammered.
Yes.
So they're upset with the county, and that's all of us. And it's just unfortunate. So something like that, I'm sorry. It just bothers me. I would think that's something that you would naturally do if you were the person that worked with the machine people. But, you know, I appreciate what you said and what you did. I watched your press conference. I thought you did a good job. I mean, yeah. Any other things for Mr. McClure?
Maybe just one more question, if I may.
Anybody, go ahead.
During the training process, we were talking about the potential. There might have been talk about potential problems.
Right.
If there were problems in the polling area, did we have anyone assigned to take those complaints or a form that they could use or a piece of paper that they could file or make a call to a staff during those problems that were existing from the morning on?
Oh, so that's a great, that's a great question, and that occurs in every election. And our staff is there in the elections office, fielding calls all day long from all over the county. And we had several technicians. We had a few E S and S technicians. What, three? Two or three? Yeah. And so when we were getting screen reports, we sent folks out. There were a couple of machines that didn't power up early in the morning. We sent new machines out. I mean, so we were doing the normal stuff that you normally do in an election.
I was just curious if E S S plus you guys had a form to note the problems so that there would be a discussion later, you could rectify them.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the county executive?
I do have, I have another comment, just because I was at the polls all day that day, and somebody had mentioned to me that there were not constables at each polling place or somebody judging the elections at every place, at every location, or if there was. She didn't feel that that person was doing their job, because she found lit inside the polling place. And from what I understand, you can't have, the person who signs you in cannot give you any literature.
That's correct.
So I just want to make you aware that that was happening.
That those things do happen, and they need to be reported, and that the judge of elections will be notified, and that lit will be removed. I don't know, did they report it?
She said she reported it, but that the judge of elections who was there went, oops.
Well, in the future, I would encourage her to call voters and...
That's what I told her to do.
They'll get it taken care of.
I mean, after the fact, it's difficult to do anything about it.
I'd love to have my leftover mail pieces right there by the book.
Yeah.
You can't do that.
No. But they need to be removed, and so I'm just saying, maybe the training needs to be a little bit more extensive or something.
My suspicion is they know that.
Mr. Chairman, just...
I believe so, too.
I did.
I'm done.
And I think they're probably trained in that regard, too. You can ask Amy about that.
Too many questions. I keep asking. One more question. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
In your county council discussion with the news reporters, you said that 90% of the polls indicated there was no problems. Yet, from 9:00, 9:30 in the morning, there were problems occurring.
Yes.
How did you determine 90%?
Well, that's an interesting question. The judges who were seeking retention, who were overwhelmingly retained at the end of the night by historic margins, were nervous during the day. So they went to court to get a court order drafted, essentially ordering the poll workers and the judges of elections to do what judges of elections and poll workers do very well. We complied with the order, and the election staff stopped doing what they were doing, running an election, and called all of the polling places. And that's where that number came from, the 90%.
So at that time...
Yeah, so we called through twice on election day to see what the problems folks were having.
And your poll, and the polling people said they were...
My information from the elections officials, about 90% of the polling places weren't having any problems, that report from the judges of elections. That's the information I have.
Okay.
Any other questions? That doesn't preclude the fact you may ask the executive something.
May I say something?
Oh, Mr. Fraro, go right ahead.
Okay. I'm here yet. But anyway, I just want to go on record as saying I have no confidence in the paper ballots. I know it's been said that they have no, Mr. McClure had something to say about that. But I just know one person, for example, said that they were told that they would see the votes on the paper ballot before finalizing their vote, but it didn't happen. So I just want to go on record as saying, if everything else went wrong, I have no confidence in the paper ballots. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything you want to say?
No.
Okay. Is there any other questions for the county executive?
No, I want to hear it from the other people.
All right. Amy's here, and I didn't mean to come down on you hard, but this is an extraordinary situation. And if there's anything we do, probably one of the most important, we have Human Service prison. But to the average citizen, they got to feel their vote counts. And next year, we're going to be, we're in a swing state and a swing county. We will have NBC in Northampton County, ABC, CBS. And if they get a whiff of anything like this, it won't be just, well, you know, we're okay. We've got it right. We are going to be pounded. And people will, we're now starting behind the eight ball, in my opinion, because the perception rules, and the perception is out there. We screwed up. And by we, I'm not putting it on him. I'm putting it on all of us. We screwed up, particularly on those folks. So the thing is, going forward, I know we did YouTube, and I know we had the presentations out there. And this is just me asking. Some of the issues that I will discuss with them, because I stood outside then, you know, and because people saw the patch, and I asked them, what'd you do? What happened with you? Because I had problems, not just with the judges. I guess the question is, are we going to do something to get information to all the registered voters? And by that, maybe it's old school. Maybe we send out something that comes from you. My name's not on it. His name's no elected officials. It's not a campaign flyer. It comes from your office, being very clear and old-fashioned, black and white, or whatever stock you want, that this is how you manage these machines before you get there. Because not everybody goes on YouTube. Not everybody went to these things. And maybe we test run them at a few senior centers. Because even though I'm old, not going to hide that either. The fact is, playing an instrument, your fingers are pretty, I can still move them fairly well. But a lot of people, I know a couple people who said they just quit because of the size of the boxes. So I think we need real-world, honest-to-God, ground-level-type outreach. And that may be a mail piece, and we're going to have to suck up the cost. I mean, I'm saying that as somebody who approves a budget. I'm not, this isn't a blame. What happened, happened. We're going to be talking to them about it. But I agree with some of the sentiment, and Mr. Lot said. Going forward, my concern now is next year. And I know the executive knows this full well. We can't even have a tenth of this situation next year for any of us. So I guess my question to you is, do you have any thoughts going forward on working with them or on your own as a department, on how we might educate people on these machines? Because the judges made it clear, they don't want to hear that the voters don't understand. I read the article, and Mr. Dertenger was politely told, "Don't tell us that."
I just think that, I was there. He didn't, Mr. Dertenger didn't say that.
I said politely.
What he said was mischaracterized.
But you know what? You know this. I don't need to tell you. We get mischaracterized every day.
I know. I know, but I was there and I'm bearing witness to the mischaracterization.
So, all right. So I guess the question is, are we going to put together a plan going forward?
We could do more voter outreach. We could send out flyers in the mail with distinctive instructions to the voter. I mean, you know, whatever it takes.
I think it would just be very, very helpful. I think maybe going out, as I said, to senior centers and taking a couple of machines and even using this past, I don't know what the legalities are. You have people who paid to look into that. But take a machine out and people can try it and you can see firsthand what's actually happening with the machi- I know I tried the machine a few times. So I, I voted for it and I still stand behind it to a point. But the thing is, when we practiced, we had nice big boxes. I was thinking, way, it was great. That wasn't the case in this election. These were these little boxes and depending on where your finger got close to or landed, all kinds of things happened. So I just think it's, it's imperative, I'm not the expert. I'm going to defer that to you. We think up some educational thing before the primary. And I would ask that your office would, would do that. That's just my little stump speech to you.
I don't think it would be that expensive. I think we should do that.
And I would be happy to help bear the cost of that.
Let me add something.
Wait, wait. Laurie, oh.
I want to add something.
Go ahead.
We're going to go, if the technology failed, we have to pay extra to try to train again. When E S S, it's their responsibility to have brought in the information, the training, to show these, these are supposed to be easy. These were supposed to be better. This is what we heard. And yes, I was the lone vote against it. I'll, he knows that. The fact is that what happened was a technology failure. Not, no one's blaming anything yet because they don't know. And you don't know. So no matter what we do with paperwork or anything right now, it doesn't matter until we find out facts, if they can find the facts out.
Now, I don't disagree with you. I just think from our end, what we can do, that's all I'm saying. I, I-
Well, Amy, Amy is in charge of that. I'm sure she could-
You know what? This is one of our fundamental responsibilities. If they would pay for it, I wouldn't say turn away their check. But if push comes to shove, I would say we have to, it's our, this is our responsibility. And in the end, it's not theirs. I mean, they're just a vendor. It's the county's responsibility to handle this vote. And if that means we've got to dig into our pocket to pay for it, we can do it kicking and screaming. We can do it cursing their name. But we may, if we have to do that, then I, I personally, it's me, we need five. You know that. Then, then if four other people agree, we would. If not, we won't. And Laurie wanted to go and she's been patiently waiting. No, that's okay.
Okay. I have a question about the actual poll workers and how much training they received. And I'm not here to cast blame. It's just that I've heard from the folks that spoke earlier tonight, as well as other people that spoke to me, that there was a lot of disparity between who could actually be helpful at the polls and then other people that were like, well, I don't know. So do you keep track of the people? Like, was there actual, every single poll worker, every single precinct trained on this machine or trained to identify problems?
It was mandatory. It was absolutely mandatory that the judge of election and machine operator, they were the two mandatory ones. That they must come for training. And we kept record of it. And we held five classes. And every class was full. Eighty-plus people at every class. And the class was about two hours long.
So can you speak to some of the complaints that you got from them at the end of the day? Because obviously they returned things and you got all of those kinds of comments. So could you speak to some of those?
We are just going through that now.
Okay.
I was not downstairs when they were returning the items that night. And I didn't get a chance to talk to them because we were busy scanning the ballots. And currently, right now, we are going through things, going through the bags and, you know, making sure everything's ready for canvassing. That's going to begin tomorrow at 9:00 AM.
So are we also going to take at some point their reports? Because again, a lot of those folks came-
Oh, yes.
Prior to say, I like this machine. I think they are in the front line-
Yes.
To be able to discuss some of the other things that maybe we don't all know. So I would like to hear what their opinion is as well.
And they are sending emails. We have received some so far, a few.
Thank you.
I will say, the person at mine, I was 14'4", 14'8", Spring Garden School, very good. They were given great instruction. So my problem certainly wasn't with the training they got. It was some of the things with the machine.
Basically, I just want to second your thing about getting more training in there or for the voters. Because I, I worked at the Panardral Word Two one. And by noon, I mean, turnout was only 125 or someone there. But even with that, people were backed up and leaving and coming back. I mean, you come to a presidential election, it's, it's going to be, you know, through the roof, you know, waiting or not getting in there to vote. Or people will be disgruntled and not coming back in because you're going to see a line out there. So-
That too, I believe, you know, we did receive a lot of phone calls of lines. And I don't believe that was the poll workers. I believe it was-
Oh, no. But I was, I'm not saying the, but there's got to be a way to educate the voters so it doesn't take them 30 minutes for someone who hasn't voted to get through the process.
It's not an excuse, but the turnout was a little bit higher than usual for these items.
I, I would agree for that, but it's going to be worse than that next year.
Yeah, sure is. You're absolutely right. And there'll be more machines out, too.
Okay.
But you're, you're right, sir. You're right.
I, I want to agree with you because I had problems with it. And that's why I spoke to the poll worker, because the woman who helped me, and I had been trained. We had just seen it two weeks ago. Like you said, it was a lot bigger. And I was trying to press something. I couldn't get a straight party. I couldn't do a lot of things. A lot of people said they had problems on the one side. I had problems on the other. But she was very kind and very helpful. So that's why I spoke to what the disparity is. But, you know, I know how to vote. I knew how to do it and I tried it several times. So I just think it was, I personally think there was a lot of sensitivity to the machine. And also, if somebody knew to tell me, you press on this side, not on this side, that seemed to be the problem with my machine.
I want to let them answer the technical questions.
Yeah, I'm just-
But a number of these potential problems should go away when we eliminate straight party voting. The Commonwealth just eliminated straight party voting.
That's conjecture.
Yeah. I, I think it will. When we eliminate, hopefully in the new, the new, eliminate that box. Because I think that box was very problematic.
Well, look, may I add something?
Uh, Bill.
Well, I think it was.
Real quick.
I think it was too.
You know, misleading and problematic.
I would like the administration to send counsel the agreement, the specifics of the agreement that we have with E S S. So we can study it, look at it.
We'll have it next week.
Because we bought a car and the car doesn't work. And, you know, we either want our car back or something.
We'll have it next week, sir.
And I want to, Bob, before we go, and I, you will, Tyra, did you have your hand up? Because I missed you last time. And I would be sure. Okay, I'm going to switch to this side.
The only thing I want to add to this is that when, this was first approached back in April when talking about this was a recommended slide program from the administration, Director of Fiscal Affairs, poll workers. Positive feedback is the system is similar to our current system. Well, if the machines were current and similar to our system, we shouldn't have had problems because we didn't have any issues before. Okay? So where is the difference? What took place? That's what you're going to have to ask. We're going to ask E S S.
Yeah.
It's here in writing. And the program that Mr. Dertenger and Amy Cozy brought, the process was, was well spelled out.
You're not wrong, sir.
Zerinsky.
I just want to know, like, when we had the final vote for this, I think it was Delaware that had called in.
Yes.
They had a vote that day. They reported no problems whatsoever. So why were our machines so, like, almost at every poll, there was like some complaint? So why were our machines so messed up? And Delaware had no problems?
I don't know. You have to ask them. I don't know.
I, I mean, I, I'm-
Warren County didn't have any of these problems either.
We lock horns sometimes between governmental bodies, but I mean, I have to agree.
Yeah, it just makes sense.
I'm upset and he's upset. And maybe I can be upset with parts of it, but he's, I think he's right. I mean, other than training, you know, and I'm, that's what, and I know the executive feels strongly about it.
But did Warren County do something different?
Well, maybe we'll, maybe we'll reach out and check with them. Maybe there were issues that weren't reported as, we, we'll have to look into it because all this is about is wanting to go forward with as much confidence-
Of course.
In this system as possible, Mr. McGee.
Philadelphia, did they run their election this time?
They did.
So how many machines are down there? You know, that's will be one of my questions.
Quite a few. And I, I, I heard issues about hypersensitivity down there, but I, I didn't, there wasn't any, maybe it's just because they're larger. Clearly that they didn't have the focus on their problems that we've had on ours. And they, I don't think they had the real problem, which was they didn't tabulate on the machine in those races where there were cross-file judicial candidates or a candidate who was on both sides of the ballot. I don't think they had that problem.
They didn't have the zeros.
They don't cross-file either, I don't think.
Is that what you mean?
They didn't cross. There's no need to.
There, there any other-
Well, no, I, I, I think as a first-class county, they don't. But I could be mistaken about that.
And there's no bad questions. I mean, this is, this is a really a big deal. I mean, and, and I know the executive knows that and that's why we're, we're doing this. I mean-
I'll stand here all night.
I know you would. And I would sit here, but I don't know if everybody would. But the thing is, I mean, there's a limit, I think, to, to, to the administration. Like, he stood up and said, I'm responsible. But in the end, we're all responsible, as I said, where the county. And that's a function of voting is on us. But is there anything else for, and that doesn't preclude somebody from having a question for him. But I mean, is there anything else right now that you would like to ask the executive and, and the voter registrar?
No, just to, just echo that, you know, we should find a way, I think, to find the money or, or, or do the training with the voters and get into the senior homes or, or reach, reach out to those so that they get more expeditions when they get up there to vote and it's not new to them.
I think, I think we're going to do some significant outreach next year. But let's first let them diagnose the problem. Give us the potential fix and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I agree. That's my point. I'd go out, I would take the biggest, heaviest, thickest, shakiest finger. There's always going to be, look, and let's say this for the record, there's no perfect voting method.
Sure.
But we know, we all know sitting here next year, no matter how good the voting is, we already now have set a climate where the votes, votes are meaningless. And we have a chief executive who says, if I win, the votes are rigged. If I lose, the votes are rigged. So that filters down. And you have talking heads everywhere who, who want to challenge. And that's the fundamental foundations of our republic, our representative republic. So we have this little thing, but it, it, it's affected by the big thing, unfortunately. And I, I would say, you know, would I like them to pick up the freight on anything going forward? Any of your ideas? Sure. But if in fact an educational thing or you, if something comes up and an executive, we, we really, I want to know personally as, as a one of nine council members. Because to me, this is like fundamental. And we're going to have to do it and maybe go to court afterwards. We don't want to do that, but you never know. Mr. Warner.
Final, final statement, and then I want to hear from the other people. In the review, the administration report, we, this, this program, this, this machinery was marketed to this council, okay? It was Director of Information Services said there was no scenario in which either system faces the possibility of security breach. We were sold on the security breach because it said the state certification process was meticulous and it was a closed system. No one could get in or out. And then they said, it's not in danger of cyber attack with any system that passes rigorous evaluation. It is not the integrity, it was not the outside hacking. It wasn't the barcodes. And it wasn't the machine itself, the weight of the paper. It wasn't the ease of it, how to ease, how to use it. It came down to the integrity of the machine itself and the security of the public voting machine that controls it. That was the concern that this council was tasked with. So here we sit. And I'm looking forward to talk to E S S.
I'm not sure if there's a security issue.
No, there wasn't.
I'm not sure there was a security issue.
Anything else?
Nope.
For the executive or for Amy? Amy, do you mind staying for a bit? We're going to pick this up right away with, with them.
Okay.
Once, once we're, I mean, I would appreciate you staying. I don't want to come off like a heavy, but I would appreciate you staying. It would be, this, this is a big thing. It would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want you to know that you can come to us if you have a problem, Amy, through the executive or whatever. Well, at this time, under old business, who's here representing, who's here representing the voting, our machine? Would you please come up and introduce yourself for the clerk?
Hello, everybody. My name is Adam Carbullido. I am Senior Vice President at Election Systems and Software. I can spell that for you. It's C A R B U L L I D O. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for giving me some time here today. On behalf of V S and S, I want to apologize to all council members, to other officials in the county, and most importantly, the voters in Northampton County for the issues that occurred on election day and election night. We take responsibility for them. We understand the gravity of the situation. We do not take it lightly at all. I want to have, we are currently actively working towards getting to a root cause of the issues that were reported. Ultimately, as was stated by the county executive, we will need to get access to the machines and the, and the equipment, we believe, to get to the bottom of it and get to the root cause. That is our primary focus right now and we'll bring every resource to bear that we need to, to do that. I do want to emphasize that, and, and agree that we, the results that were reported are accurate, can be audited, can be reviewed and can, and will withstand any scrutiny. I'm confident in that. I also want to thank the citizen that came up and spoke and shared her concerns earlier. I appreciate her speaking out on behalf of other voters who, who had issues on election day. I, I agree 100% that we've got to get to the point of restoring confidence. And the, and the first step in that process is diagnosing the issues, getting to the root cause and the resolution. Once we do that, only then can we begin the process of reaching, of gaining voter confidence back again. So with that being said, I'm open to taking any questions.
Fine. Mr. Dietz.
I guess, so the first question, and I hope we can do this without having ours on record yet, is what difference between our election and Delaware? I mean, that was really the, I guess, the, the swing for us to vote for. What was, did they have cross-ballot ballot voting? Did, you know, what were the differences?
I, I'm not sure if they have cross-ballot voting or not. And quite, at this point, I cannot speculate on what the difference is. There's nothing obvious that stands out to us that was difference between Delaware's election and your election here. But I do believe that once we get access to the machines and we complete our root cause analysis, we will be able to answer that question. And that's an important question to answer.
And did you guys do like the cross-filing tests and, and practices, you know, on preparing the machines for us? Is that a-
We worked with the county on preparing the election and doing the pre-election testing, which went smoothly. Didn't indicate any issues at all.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm on a question. Because like, when we did the demos that we had here, I don't believe there were any cross-ballot in there. And so whether or not we, we thought of that scenario, which leads, the next thing is, I guess, just forethinking, any type of scenarios that might be on the ballot next year in an election that, you know, whether it's cross-ballot or, or, because it's a presidential one, what candidates might be on there that, positions that could be on there that we didn't prepare for to make sure that, you know, that's not a new line item that's in there that wasn't tested in, in the, the training or practices.
Okay, I, I understand. Yes, we absolutely test the cross-filing significantly throughout our testing before products are go into certification. That's also tested during certification. And then again, obviously tested in the pre-election testing as well. Never have we seen this issue in any of that testing.
Yeah, 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 just, yeah.
Mr. Lot.[1677.74] Pass. Mr. McGee.
The version we got, the version of the election machine that we got, was it manufactured during the same timeframe? Do you have that information, or can you get us that information? Was it manufactured at the same time?
Yeah, I can get you the exact information.
As the Delaware?
But generally speaking, it was manufactured in the same timeframe. I can't tell you the exact amount of time.
And the same batch that went down to Philadelphia?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
So they were all made right around the same time?
I can't say there was all one single production run, but I can tell you it was all around the exact same timeframe, yes.
Thank you.
You in second thought? Go ahead, Mr. Lot.
What I'm looking for is for you to tell me that you can fix this machine and will never have this problem again. Now, I know you can't do that because you're telling me you don't even know what the problem was. How do we move forward? How do we trust your machine moving forward? I mean, you're going to come back and tell us, "Well, this was the cause of the problem. Here's how we can fix it." You put this county in a very, very bad position. You put the executive in a bad position. You put the voters in a bad position. Are you prepared to take your machines back if you don't give us the confidence that you can fix this thing? We should not have to pay $2,800,000 for something that does not work. What are you prepared? If you can't fix this, how do we move forward? I mean, this is not good. And I don't know that you can give us an answer on this. And even when you tell us what the problem was, can you guarantee us that you can fix it? And I know you can't answer that today, but I'm frustrated. I was at it at the polls, too. This was extremely frustrating that we spent this kind of money, thought we were buying a Cadillac, and the thing, we introduced it, and it doesn't work. It doesn't work, it doesn't work well. So there's no answer needed? Frustration is what I want you to understand. And I want you to actually think, if you can't guarantee us this thing will never happen again, you should take your machines back, and we should get our money back. Thank you.
I understand.
You have a right to respond.
I understand your frustration. I don't expect you to take my word for it when we do identify the root cause and the fix. I think that we're going to have to demonstrate that. We may have to conduct tests, you know, live public tests that demonstrate that the issues have been resolved.
I would ask you, after the 20 days, and I know you have to wait, which is understandable, once you have done your due diligence, I would like counsel, I know the executive certainly wants one, and I would like, whether it's the same one with a different name on it, it's fine with me, but goes directly from you to us, a report on what happened, what you thought that was wrong, deficiencies, what you felt went right, and the plan of action then going forward.
Absolutely.
Once you get that, and hopefully, then you'll be able to come back. You may have to come back a few times. Okay.
Might get an appointment here.
On your dime. All right, go ahead.
I keep hearing you say we're going to look for the root cause, so I know you're going to do an analysis, but I'm hearing, like, several areas where there were deficiencies. So could you outline the process that you're going to use? Because I'm hearing calibration issues, I'm hearing sensitivity issues, programming issues, so how are you going to do this root cause analysis?
Yeah, we've got to look at the data. All of the systems contain event logs that track all the events that occurred throughout the day on election day, and even leading up to election day and the programming and all that, and through the testing. We need to analyze all of that. We need to run diagnostics on the machines to see if there's any sort of issue that is not obvious, so we have tools that we can use to run those sort of diagnostics. We do believe that the event logs and the audit logs in the systems may give us some clues as to what might have occurred. We also want to take known systems that we know that do not have these issues, compare them to the systems that we have here, and see if there's any obvious differences between them. We want to look at the process that led up to election day, compare that to other processes, and see if there was differences in that process that may have caused the issues. But right now, it's all speculation, so, but that's the sort of process that we're going to need to go through.
And how long did you take to set up these machines to be able to be used on that day? Were you part of that process? Was that an us process? Was that a collaborative process?
ESS staffed, worked side by side with county staff. I can't tell you the amount of time they worked together. I know that the design of the ballot and the configuration of the machines took a couple of weeks. Can't tell you the exact amount of days. I think the testing occurred, the pre-election testing occurred over a few days, I believe.
I was going to say, was there pre-failure analysis tests run? Because obviously, like, for it to be fine up to the day, and then all of a sudden, all of these machines all over the county to have glitches, doesn't seem to make sense.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, the pre-election testing did not indicate any issues. So, yeah, we're as baffled as you, as to why the pre-election testing went well, and then we had the issues on election day.
I'm just interested to hear the process when it's done.
Mr. Carbolito, I don't know why you're baffled, okay? Because you've been with the company since 2004. You've had, what, 15 years with ESS? And since that time, half the country votes on these machines, correct?
No, they don't vote on these machines.
ESS nation's largest manufacturer of voting technology, yes?
Yes, I believe we are.
And you were involved in hotly contested races. And in all those 14 years, you stated on April of 2019 and at the mea culpa moment in this chamber, that you never saw problems.
I've never been in this chamber before.
Yeah, well, when they did the, when they did the, yesterday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's this chamber. When they asked you, you said you never saw any problems like this.
Never seen these problems.
You have never experienced these problems at all?
We have not.
You've never heard of anything called flipping?
Yeah, we've heard of.
Oh, you did hear of flipping?
Of vote flipping on a previous.
Would you explain what you think vote flipping is?
Yeah, I can try my best to explain the older touchscreen technology. Got a couple pieces of papers here that'll do it for me. In older touchscreen technologies, there was one layer that registered the touch and another layer that displayed the content. Those would sit on top of each other, and over time, or as those machines would move around, those two layers would move apart. And suddenly, if you touched somewhere where you thought you saw, it would actually register at a different location. That's not the technology that we're using here in Northampton County with the Express Vote XLs. So that is a very different situation than what we're experiencing.
But you had similar reactions on these screens?
I'm not sure that the situations that occurred on election day were the exact same.
Well, you haven't done the research yet, but let me offer this, okay? You said in Georgia back in 2018, they lost 150,000 votes casted during a governor's race, and there was no determination, whether it was mechanical or human error, and litigation is still surrounding, and still endures, the vote endures today. That's, you have litigations that outstanding, correct?
I'm not familiar with that particular situation.
Because you haven't found answers to the problems.
I'm just personally not familiar with that particular situation.
Well, you had another problem in Indiana with ESS systems plagued by mishaps at local levels in Johnson County. And you missed, the state election officials said you missed judges in need for resources to serve Johnson County, and they paid more than 1.5 million and pulled their contract. Is that true?
I believe that's true, yeah. I'm not intimately familiar with that situation.
Fine, Sarasota, Florida, ESS machines lost 18,000 votes. I know you know about this one, okay? It's still unclear. Lawsuits followed that, and still nothing has been resolved. Is that true?
I'm not sure if that's true or not.
Okay, let's just say you got one out of three. You did hear one of them, okay? And you heard of some of these situations. So when you stood in front of us and said you never heard of any problems, was that true?
I've never heard of these specific problems. These specific problems.
We don't know what the problems are in these voting machines right now. And there's no resolve in the systems that you've already had problems in. So how are you going to give us an answer if you can't solve the problems in the past from 2006, 2011, 2018?
I can't speak to those previous situations, but I can tell you, we are 100% committed. We will bring every resource to bear to resolve this situation and get to the bottom of it.
I am going to join with Mr. Lot in telling you that. I don't know how you're going to do this, because it sounds like magic to me at this point. And I don't believe in, and I've lost trust in what you said. I had lost trust when I first heard some things. But ESS has had several blunders, including exposing personal information, and it happened in Illinois. In 2011 and 2017, when voting machines screwed the votes on the screen, and the voter would select the candidate, and another one would be selected. That's exactly what was taking place in Northampton County. You know what the answer was? Well, they blamed it on the voter, and they blamed it on calibration, okay? When do you calibrate these machines?
These machines, the alignment for these machines is conducted in our facilities before they're deployed to the county.
Every how many years?
This technology only needs to be aligned one time.
In your contract, it says every two years. And now, if it's required, you do it because we ask you to, correct?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
If we ask you to calibrate the systems, you will do it, correct?
If you ask us to, sure.
Okay, so these machines were tested?
Correct.
And you said that they were calibrated correctly?
Yeah, they were configured correctly.
Obviously, they weren't, okay? So I'm with Mr. Lot. My point is this, $2.9 million, we're still saying, "Thank God, we have paper ballots," okay? You've lost my vote and my confidence, and I'm all for taking our $2.9 million back and getting something else. I'm sorry, okay?
Anyone, Mr. Dietz?
I'll say while we're, I think the county does hold, you know, some on training our voters and getting it out in front of them before next year. I guess I'm just asking if, you know, in second part, to say face on the voting systems, if we put something together to, a way to demo with our voters between now and the primary of next year, after finding the cause, if you guys would, you know, partner up with us to make that happen?
Yeah, we will absolutely partner up with you on that, absolutely.
We're usually a fairly collegial group up here, but I think you can sense the frustration in all our voices and concern. Ms. Zirinsky?
I think it's more than just what we can do on our side to train voters. And I respect what Mr. Warner said and Mr. Lot said. The idea that you can make sure that each of these individual machines works properly on the next vote, when you haven't been able to do that this vote, you can't tell us that this has ever happened before. And we went and talked to Delaware, and Delaware told us they had no problems. This is beyond frustrating because it's about the public trust. And we put that trust in you, and it's very hard when you're there on election night and you see candidates with zero votes. There's no reason to explain that to everybody in the room. Because we all raised our hands, and we said, "We knew we voted for this person." I'm with them. I think we should get our money back, and I think we should be able to choose a different machine. Or it should go back to the election board.
One quick comment. Do you think, where do you think you guys are at with the state certification on what happened here? What's your thoughts on that?
On the state certification of what happened here?
These are certified by the state of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, correct. Yes, they are certified by the state of Pennsylvania.
Would you see that's in jeopardy? Do you see that being in jeopardy?
I don't think we can speculate of that until we get to the root cause.
But you did work in other states, though, right?
Yeah, we do work in other states, correct.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Carbolito, I just want to ask you, what's your title with the company?
Senior Vice President.
What's your background? Is it marketing tech? Is it?
Yeah, I have a degree in corporate finance, but I don't practice that. I grew up at this company, took a job at ESS out of college, worked for about 10 years in the field, helping customers implement and run voting systems. A few years ago, I transitioned onto the product development side, and now I work with the product development group.
Would it be fair or safe to say that, given some of the concerns and questions that have been coming up, if there is a time, and I would like to say that I do think we're going to have to get together a few times before next April, in a public setting, because this is all about the public, not about what Mr. McClure thinks or I think, it's about what the general public thinks. And have some of the, a technical person or something, I mean, somebody who could get in, and that's not an offense to you, I mean, I'm just saying, you obviously know your product, but get into tech, in case we get down that techie road.
Absolutely. I know absolutely what you mean. I have a team full of very highly specialized technical people. Usually, I do the speaking for them, but I'm happy to bring them along if we think it would help.
I would say this, that you'll probably take the shots and the hits.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody up here is going to go after them necessarily. You've got the title, so you'll take the hits.
Yep, absolutely.
I think one of the concerns that's going forward, and I've heard this in the council members' voices, and certainly the executive expresses, I think that the results will, for the most part, will stand up. I tend to agree with that. Where I'm, I have some concerns is that if somebody that I had, my personal experience was, as I said, when I practiced, I had big boxes. When I went in, I had a box about that size, and especially to the left of the machine. If I hit a little bit too far to the right, the other one lit up. Now, I'd go back and I'd hit again, but I had to hit that one to get rid of it. And I guess one is the confidence that the paper ballots, because what we've been told is, and people have to look, and they, I'm going to say that folks have responsibilities, but that that paper ballot, I wouldn't, I would be sure if everybody looked at that paper ballot. And frankly, I think going forward, we might want to look at lighting, because when we did it, it was in an open area. I mean, and some people said, "Well, I didn't have a problem." I'm going to go with the demographic like I have, and who's probably one of the largest voting groups. And you had to get in there to read, so, and it was sort of dark inside with the curtains. So we might want to look at some auxiliary something. But the thing is, I, my concern was, as I went, it was super sensitive to the right, as I got to it, the judges, and even the ballot question, I was literally doing this, and nothing was happening. Now, I know it was said to the court, "Well, you son," but, I mean, I'm not going to go to a voter and say, "Well, you know, don't do this." Voters are going to do what voters are going to do. And I had a lot of trouble, depending on where I put my finger, for the wrong one to come on. So that's personal experience. And I think I talked to people up here. Everyone, everyone, I think, had some personal experience. Now, I've been in this, and I've heard it, I've used your machines at conferences. So I had sort of the word with all to say, "Okay, step back, do this a little bit different, do that." But my concern, again, is the problem we have with the integrity of what people think. I mean, it's like a car. I had an Ford Explorer when they were recalled with fire-stung tires. And it was only a few, but ultimately, at the end of the day, if, let's say, you have brake problems, and it's like 5%, 2%, 1%, anybody who owns that model car is immediately going to feel they have brake problems. And somebody sees a little leak by the brake cylinder, and they're going to go to the dealer, "Fix it, fix it, fix it, you know, I want to get rid of it." And right now, we have an integrity of the process problem. And I don't know if we'll, hopefully, we'll have that solved, but we're going to have to do everything in our power, as you heard earlier, to convince the public that their vote counts. I mean, I did talk to, as I said, I had my, Mr. Warner wears a sweater with the patch on. I have a windbreaker with a county patch on. And I didn't realize, when I went to vote that night, what that patch was going to mean when I left. And I had people who said they got frustrated. They kept hitting the button, nothing happened, they left. Well, their vote didn't count. So it wasn't that it was miscounted, it didn't count. They did felt disenfranchised. And I don't, I'm not going to minimize that. No machine's perfect. People make mistakes, I'm not going to blame the voter. We have to work our machines to the average person out there. And I felt the demonstrations I had did not match with the experience I had. And, I mean, that's why I said if we have to do demonstrations, use the smallest allowable space we're allowed, maybe by law, and people have to practice on that. It has to be a real-world experience for them. And so that's my big concern. I mean, we could go on and on about what happened, and Lord knows we could. And people have the right to do that if they want. But I think, for me, I'm focused going ahead. I mean, like I said, the training was like me going up, and Mr. Dietz is our aviation man, but let's say he takes me up in a Piper Cub and says, "Go ahead now, you can work the controls." And, "Okay, you do it fine, now let me land it." And then he'd say, "Hey, you know how to fly." And I'd go out, and there's an F-18 sitting on the lot. That's how I felt going from the practices I had to this machine. It was like, wow. Now, I've been told, "Well, that won't be a problem, because next, this next year, we're going to have less on the ballot." I don't care. That's not, that's an excuse, that's not a reason. I don't want to hear excuses. I mean, we need as best as we can get. Are you going to get 100%? No, you're not. But this was a fair drop-down. I mean, I do think your results will stand. I agree with the executive. But even if two or three people walked out, said, "I've stopped, I was frustrated, I was angry," or, "This is whatever, I won't get into the words." But the point is, we have got to make that better going forward. And, I mean, that's on you folks.
Absolutely.
I mean, whatever we have to do, we have to do. But I just want you to be clear. I mean, this isn't just about slapping you because it's pro forma, we have to do that. This is serious, and I think in everybody's mind here. And we realize you didn't get to it yet. You've got 20 days or whatever. But, I mean, we're going to anxiously look forward to hearing more from you in the future.
Yeah, I agree, those situations are unacceptable, and we are absolutely committed to making sure that we minimize, if not eliminate, those types of situations.
I don't know how many people said to me, "What are you guys going to do next year?" And I said, "We're going to go, we're going to vote." And I said, "Hopefully, hopefully no candidates say anything." Mr. Werner?
Let me play Columbo, just one more question to you. It's not even a question, it's an awareness, okay? You're the Senior Vice President of Product Development. In Decatur County, voters were given an option of using a pointer because they knew they might have problems with their fingers. Were we ever made aware of that in this county?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure whether this county is made aware.
Did you find out about that?
Yeah, I can look into that.
Thank you.
Ms. Hefner, can you say you wanted to say something? I thought you looked at me with a questionable look. Does anyone have anything else for the gentleman who sold us these machines that we're discussing? To be, to be fair, I understand there were some problems with other kinds of machines, too, but I, that's their problem. I'm concerned with Northampton County, and going forward, I, and I think we're going to have to be a great partnership moving forward.
Yeah, it's critical that we work closely with the county executive office and keep you guys all informed, and take any direction from you that, that you feel is necessary.
And you and whatever staff we feel is necessary will be amenable to coming into one of our public meetings.
Absolutely. We'll bring every resource to bear.
All right, before you sit down, any other questions for this man? Thank you very much for being here, and hopefully we'll get things straightened out.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. If you have questions after this, I, I think route them through county executive's office.
All right, we'll route them directly to you.
Or directly to me, that will work, too. Thank you all.
You're welcome. All right. So now, we'll get back to our other business. Under Old Business, we have a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing Preparation and Submission of a Declaration of Taking and Related Documentation for the Lands of Sun Blessed Holdings."
Mr. Ackman?
Yes, sir.
Can Amy go back to work?
She was, does anyone have any questions for Amy? I just wanted her here for the beginning. Does anyone have any questions?
No, thank you.
No.
Thank you, Amy. Go ahead, go back, do what you got to do. It was an extraordinary night, so. No, I feel, I feel bad for her, actually, to be honest with you. This is baptism by more than fire.
By scream.
It's like fourth Ring of Hell or something. All right, anyway, this ordinance was introduced by Mr. Lot and myself. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Yes, sir, I know you had. All right, you have your five minutes, and if there's questions, we'll
No problem.
Work on that.
Again, I'm Mike DeLuzio, myself and Sam Elias, of Sun Blessed Holdings LLC. We have a rental property, and we own 150 South Union. We bought it at an auction not too long ago. I wanted to give you a little background on the property. Right now, it's occupied by the guy who foreclosed on it. He never left. We know him, his name's Glenn Lobzak. And Glenn owned it from 2008 until he foreclosed on it, unfortunately, earlier this year. When the bank took it over, we bought it at a bank foreclosure auction. Previous to that, it was owned by mom, previous to that, it was owned by his great grand, or, sorry, great uncle, back into the 1950s. So it's kind of been in his family, he's never, never left, never lived anywhere else. Our property, we, we've been in it, it's not the Taj Mahal, but it's, it's occupied, has utilities, has a roof, doesn't leak, is structurally sound. The other half of the property is the county's, which I showed you before, is obviously in pretty bad shape. And that wasn't something that happened overnight, that was something that happened for a long time. And I understand it was purchased in 2005 for what, what we know is, we were told it was purchased for $60,000 by the county. I, I can't confirm that, but that's what we were told. So when we first bought this property, we bought it at an auction, auction.com is the website. It was a bank-owned foreclosure, we bought it there. After we bought it and paid our good faith deposit, we found out the county was looking at condemning it. And back on September 4th, 2019, received an email, said the county, this is from the county solicitor's office, "The county intends to condemn the properties on the lot due to uninhabitable conditions." Never at the beginning of that time were we told anything about parking lots, which is what we're here for now. Fast forward about two weeks, September 17th, 2019, again, in talking with the solicitor's office, the email from the solicitor's office, "I advised him," and then him being Sam, this email was sent to me, "The county could build the planned parking lot somewhere else, and they would be interested in selling their property at 152 South Union to us." "The county would certainly entertain it, it needs to be done as soon as possible." So the reason I'm here is arguing against this, this ordinance. It's apparent that the condemnation here isn't, it's for a parking lot. I have no doubt that a parking lot will be built there, but it doesn't need to be done. It's, it's by the county's own negligence through time that their property became uninhabitable, and they feel like they need to take it down. And we had just talked about voting machines, and we said, "When, when the county screws up," you were saying, "Oh, you know, there's a screw-up." The county has to own it. All we're asking is that the property at 152 South Union, that less than two months ago, the county was looking at selling, let us go in it and look at it, and entertained offers from us. We're just asking that the county fixes the roof a little bit and sells it. Let somebody else take it, let an investor buy it. The only thing that's changed between the time that we found out about the, "They can move the parking lot somewhere else, and now we're here that we need it for a parking lot," is the Gus Malitis building was knocked down. So suddenly, we have 60, 80, 100, what will be 100, I don't know, something like that, parking spots, and suddenly, we need our property for another parking lot. It doesn't make sense. Additionally, we're talking about, it was told, I think the ordinance is handicap parking lot. We already have an issue in front of the courthouse with a mid-block crossing. Our property at 152 South Union is right in front of the doors, front doors of the new part of the prison. You can't really, it's difficult to get from there to the courthouse. The only thing that would really serve is the prison, maybe juvenile probation, detention, but still, you have to go down a hill. Handicap parking at, at that spot, I, I don't think really works. It only services one county building, and it's a mid-block crossing, just like the problem we had out here. So ultimately, I, I think it's, the reason that this condemnation is happening, and like I said, I have no doubt there's a parking lot that's going to get built there if they would take it and knock it down. I don't think it has to be done. I'd like to keep the property. We bought it as an investment, obviously. That's what we're doing. But we, we know Mr. Lobzak, Sam's friends with a nephew of his, and that's how we got to know him. It's been his home forever. I, I don't feel right that the county would end up taking it and kicking him out for something that doesn't necessarily need to be done.
I, I think if there's any questions for you, you're going to be here while we listen to this.
Yes.
Would you, for the record, do you have his partner's name?
It's Samuel Elias, E L I A S.
So she, just so we have it for her file for the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're going to, Mr. McClure would like to be recognized, I think. And he will introduce whoever he's, wow.
The power of
Bringing up a team.
Well, these are the guys who have the facts. The power of condemnation is awesome, and I wouldn't use it lightly. I just wouldn't. But unfortunately, we have a situation here where we have a public need for it. We have investors, and it, it certainly is their right, it certainly is the investors' right to speculate in order to make money. I think you'll see from the evidence here that this, it wasn't an altruistic investment on their part, it was relatively recent. And you'll see that we've offered a fair price in excess of what they paid for it in an online auction just a few months ago. We took an oath, and part of that oath is not to use very awesome powers, such as condemnation, for inappropriate reasons, and I wouldn't do that, but I've also taken an oath not to have the taxpayers held up by investors who are speculating because they're surrounded by government properties and a government that has a deep pocket because it has taxpayers who are forced to send them real estate property tax on an annual basis. So with that, I turn it over to Mr. Parsons.
I think I'm a very surprised and stunned Mr. Parsons. What do you have to say?
I started this process, and when I took this position as a deputy director, back in February of 18, I found a notice that we had that, I didn't even know we owned this piece of property. And I, and I sat on council for four years, I didn't know we owned this property, because this property was in shambles a lot sooner than we took over. At that time, I took a look at the property, there was a huge hole in the roof, as, as they said, and I'm just like, "Okay, let's see what we can do." I tried numerous times to contact the neighbor, I knocked on his door, I know there was letters sent to him. He never responded to us over a year, year and a half. We got the solicitor involved, you know, we knew, we started this process, we've been at it for a year and a half, actually, that I knew something had to be done, you know, because it's, it's in shambles. If we want to fix it, we can fix it, but I, after ever looking at it, I think our best avenue, being a half a double like that, there's just no way to tear a half a double down and start from scratch, which you basically should do. That's really, you know, where I turned it over to the solicitor and the financial people, and said, "Let's see what we can do." So with that, I'll give it to Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. Hi, as Scott mentioned, the property, I was first surprised at the situation, I believe in December of 2017? 2018. It was my understanding that it was owned by Mr. Glenn Lobzak. I attempted to contact him to ascertain the, the condition of the properties. He turned out to be very difficult to, to contact. I had Tina Smith from the Department of Economic Development, and I had numerous email contacts over the space of about three months, back and forth trying to contact him. I then, I wrote him certified mails, return receipt mails. I went there personally twice, followed up again, return receipt mails. I, I got the sheriff to go out to try and contact him, to discuss the property and the state and what we could do. At that point, we were entertaining, there were numerous uses. You know, maybe we, we could install, not install, but renovate the building, but, but we're not landlords, we're not into land development. We realized that the parking lot was the most beneficial use of that property. So I did have the sheriff to go out and contact him. That started in January. It wasn't until April that he finally called me back, this is a screenshot of his finally contacting me after four months of, of attempts. At that point, he told me that the property was in foreclosure, there was about $80,000 to $85,000 left that the bank wanted. I realized that we could not buy it at that, at that pricing and cover the remaining mortgage. At that point, they told me they were going to foreclose, they had contacted council, who I faxed. I emailed them at that time to let them know that the county was interested in obtaining this property. They told me that was a proper procedure, so I did. Subsequently, about two weeks after that, they told me that the property was originally owned by Mr. Lobzak through BB and T Bank, then Freddie Mac, who did not deal directly with purchasers. It was going to be an online auction, to auction.com, which I signed up for on behalf of the county to keep a, a track on the stats of the property, so we can make the appropriate bid when the time came. That, this again is a screenshot of my application on behalf of the county. You'll see that the property was, was bid, the bid was open at $10,000. I put ourselves in line to acquire the property for the purposes of parking. At that point, I again wrote council for the foreclosure to again express my interest, let them know that we had applied for the auction, that we were interested in acquiring the property. I found out, probably again about two weeks later, that Sun Blessed Properties had bid, and had, had bid about $35,000, and I got into property. Mr. DeLuzio wrote me, asking what was going on with the property, what was the county's intention. I told them in an email that we were going to condemn the property. He had mentioned that it was unclear as to our purpose. At that point, they represented, it was represented to me that there was a Dwight Danzer, who's a local attorney who was somewhat representing Sun Blessed. I told Mr. Danzer in an email, "We were acquiring the property, it was our intention to acquire it for the purposes of parking." It was clear. Mr. Danzer during that conversation said, "Okay, fine, Brian, we will release it to you, we'll sell it to you. We will sign it over to you, you can show up at closing and take the property for $35,000." I quit calling Mr. McClure, the rest of administration, within minutes, I fired off a letter back on behalf of the county, "Fine." I didn't even try and negotiate, "We will take $35,000 and take the property off your hands for our parking lot." $35,000?
$35,000, yeah.
$545, exactly. That's when he stepped out, and Mr. DeLuzio, Mr. Elias stepped in, and we engaged over the course of about two months of negotiating. They told me they didn't want the $35,000, it was too low. I said, "Fine," and these are tabs of, of our negotiations, where I went from the 35, I offered them 41. I, I asked several times, "Do you have a counter?" They refused to counter. I moved to the mid-40s, I asked for counters, again, they refused to counter. We got to the point where I offered $50,000, which we thought was, was a pretty good profit, considering they spent $35,000, did absolutely zero work, were willing to make $15,000. I wasn't interested in the fact that they made a profit, I was interested in acquiring this, this property for the public use, which was expressed repeatedly throughout my emails and correspondence to them. And, and so with that, we were never able to reach a price. I did notify them as recently as this past Monday, that $50,000 was still on the table, I hadn't taken it off in good faith, we're still interested in acquiring the property. They did finally respond, they had never countered with, with any type of counter offer or, or anything of any sort. In fact, at one point, they, they did ask, "Would we be interested in, in, in selling ours, or doing some kind of swap?" I said, "Sure." Again, if you look through all our correspondence, and I've copied every single correspondence, they never once countered in good faith. There was no counter. The first time I got a counter was yesterday, for $85,000, and which they claimed they would not move off at $85,000. They ended that email saying that they were a little upset and perplexed that I would do this and side with the people of Northampton County. Well, I am proud that I did. It was a stated purpose, a public purpose, which is allowed. And if anything, even, even if I wasn't clear about handicap, regular parking, the law is clear, as long as it's, it's a public purpose, and it's ultimately used for a public purpose, that's efficient, and that meets the, the requirements of the law. With that, I will turn
My way to hold it. Before you leave, attorney, I think you're going to get some questions here.
Sure.
So we might as well, just before the, the other folks come up, Ms. Hefner.
Sir, what was, prior to this $85,000 ask, what was the highest level offered by the county prior to what they requested?
I started at $35,545, which was the price that they paid at auction. I was willing to, to buy it right off of them. I wasn't going to try and make money. At one point, someone said, "Well, are you, are you going to turn it into condos?" I'm like, "No, we're not landlords."
But what was, I said, what was the highest level, like
That eventually offered?
Yes.
$50,000.
$50,000, and they turned it down, or they just didn't respond?
There was no response in writing until yesterday.
Okay, and in any of your correspondence with them, does it indicate that they had concern for the current resident and that they didn't want to sell because they didn't want to put him out of a home?
I, I think for the first time, probably about two weeks ago, they mentioned that Mr. Lobzak was still living in there. Up until that point, we had, had no evidence that he lived there. Like I said, I had made multiple contacts, including going out in person, having the sheriff go out, we, we had no evidence of proof that he lived there.
But they didn't?
That was not mentioned.
In any of your correspondence?
It was not mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Is he living there now?
They, they claim that he is.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Dietz.
So we say that, that the county is not landlord, so, so why did we buy the other half when we did? Do you know? Yeah.
I can't speak for that.
No, that's a different
Thanks, I realize that.
I, I think, I think historically, was Mr. Reeben executive then?
Five, uh, yep.
Yeah.
It was last year.
Stofa got elected in six. Historically, Mr. Reeben had this notion that he would purchase as much of the property around the campus as he possibly could for county purposes.
Fair enough, and then
I think that's the history.
So say I, as an, as an owner, bought that property 2005 and let it get rundown, what would be the recourse against me? If I was the owner of the, the side that the county did, as a private person, and it got run down, would I not be told to fix it up? So, so I, I think that, you know, our failure in not keeping that side up as the owner of it is, you know, shouldn't mandate that the, the other side has to sell the property. I, I think us, as the owners of it since 2005, had an obligation to keep it up, to protect the other half of it.
I agree, and once we found out, I sent my engineers out there and, and we examined it, and we, we realized that it was like a frame-on-frame, without a party wall.
So I, I, I realize that, and, and I hate to spend the county dollars, but that's not the other neighbor's fault. And, and also, as a, as a private owner, we say he didn't respond in good faith. Take away that you're the county offering it, you know, my neighbor says, "I want to buy your house, I know what you bought it for. This is what I think is a good, fair price." What, what mandate do I have to say, "I have to respond to you, I have to accept your offer"?
Well, I, I guess my point is, it's not the situation where we, where we went in and went to take their property. You know, we realized there was an issue, we, we thought one way of rectifying this issue is we're willing to buy it off you to further the public need which we had in mind.
So
That's kind of, to get the impression that, that, that we're in the business of taking a piece of property, that, that's not the case, the situation.
Well, that's what it is, and, and we're strong-armed, saying that he's not accepting our, our deal. As, I, I, I'm very much against eminent domain, I'm against, I'm very for, you should own your property, and the same, you know, the county should be held to the same responsibility as if that was a private owner that owned the other half and let it get rundown. And I realize it's going to cost us more because we neglected it for 13 years, but, you know, I hate to say, but, I mean, I, I think that's a responsibility on us. You know, I think certain members on, on here are against eminent domain taking it for other so-called public interests, you know, utilizations, and I think it's a stretch to say that, that, that parking is such a need that we need to take someone's home away from them.
But parking is a legitimate need that hasn't been recognized by the court. And I, I believe my, my engineering people will testify that there is a parking deficit around the courthouse. courthouse.
So, I just, I'm against it, I'm against, you know, eminent domain, I think that, you know, it's unfortunate that we slacked on our responsibilities as, you know, we're holding the voting machines responsible for, you know, I think we had the responsibility to keep it up and not dilapidated to affect the neighbor, so I'm against it, and I would hope others would follow.
Ms. Hefner, then Mr. Kusick.
Do we own this property outright, or is it another situation where it came to the repository, or we actually do own the property?
We own the other half.
Okay.
Just real quick, so you acknowledged that, you notified him that it was our intent to condemn it after he had already won the bid for the property?
The property was still available on auction when I notified them, because Mr. DeLuzio had.
He had already had a bid in there.
He already had.
So, all right, so to say that he's speculating because you want to condemn it, he had already had the offer in before you identified it to him.
But the agreement of sale wasn't signed.
It doesn't matter. When he put that bid in in good faith, it wasn't speculating, you did not make that contact with him that you intended to condemn it.
I didn't know who he was at the time.
Exactly, so, but so his bid was put in in good faith on his own?
We didn't know who he was because we were dealing with the current property.
But that doesn't matter. The point being, when he hit enter on that to put that bid in, there was no contact, so it wasn't like he got some back trade deal, knew that you were going to condemn it, and put the bid in. Not knowing who he was, not contacting him, he put that bid in, in whatever reason. I was a real estate investor in the past, he took the risk to it, he wanted to fix it up, he wants to do anything, you know, so to make it, to present it that, you know, we didn't present to him till after he put the bid in. Whether the deal was closed yet, whether papers were still to be signed, he put it in on his own good faith of it.
I do think that Mr. Lobzak knew, because he did reach out to Mr. Taylor before it was sold, and I believe that Mr. DeLuzio stated in one of his statements that he knew, Mr. Lobzak knew his business partner, Sam Elias, through family friends or something like that, so draw your attention to that.
So, a family friend knows that their house is getting foreclosed and offers to buy it to keep a minute, precludes them from owning it?
But the bank knew, the attorneys knew, Mr. Lobzak knew, I notified everyone that we could of the county's intentions.
Mr. Lobzak allowed his property to go into foreclosure.
Mr. Kusick was next, but she already did.
Typically, when the county acquires property, we require an appraisal. Has an appraisal been done at any time on the property?
No, it is not.
That's troubling to me, because typically, that's part of the process.
We were trying to work with the bank before it went to auction, Mr. Kusick, I'm well aware that there needs to be an appraisal. The bid process was troubling for us because we don't have the ability without appraisals to acquire property. That is why we were working through the bank to try to get it before it went to auction. So that's why this process was sort of not, it was a difficult process for us to engage in because it's something we hadn't done before, because usually, if the county is willing to offer money to a bank to take a property like that, that would be where it ended, it would have never gotten to auction.com. But because of the unusual circumstances here, we were trying to figure out the best way to acquire the property, and this is where we are today. There was no county money ever expended, but we tried to get the property by doing the appraisals. That's why the other correspondence.
I think then the problem that we have is, we have counsel, we have no idea what this may be worth, so we may wind up in a board of views situation where the property owners bring their eighty-five thousand dollar appraisal, and, you know, the taxpayers lose out. I mean, for me personally, I'd rather sell them the neighboring property and put it on the tax rolls for the city of Easton, because, you know, we spent a lot of money for the Melitus Building, and I took a lot of guff for that, and it is becoming a parking lot, and I believe we do have, when that is finished, we will have an adequate number of spaces. So I am opposed to this. I think, you know, council and a governing body does have awesome powers. We can take people's money, we can spend it, and we can take their property. And this is a case where I don't really think we need it, and I don't want it, so I'll be voting against this.
Ms. Zierinski.
Right. So you said that Mr. Lobzak knew, allowed his property to go into foreclosure, right?
Somehow he got the, I'm not sure where it is.
But he was living there, the property went into foreclosure, and you're telling me that they had a previous relationship with Mr. Lobzak?
They had said they knew him, just while they were here. What I do know is that when we went out to the house on several occasions, myself, Mr. Parsons, Mr. Emili, Brian Taylor, we were all at the house, we did not see any person there. I also happen to know that Mr. Lobzak has had some involvement with the Wilson Police recently, and there is a care of address on that particular file at the magistrate's office in the public record that shows him at care of Alice Lobzak, eighteen thirty-four Washington Boulevard, Easton, PA. There was no activity in the house, our letters were going unanswered, we could not find this individual. And now we have another address for him, and there's a care of address on record with the magistrate.
My concern is that I went into our side of the property. There's a significant amount of black mold in there that I can't imagine isn't going through to the other side. I can't imagine that another person could live in that other side of that house. My concern is that somehow, I don't like eminent domain, but that somehow there's not a person living in that other side, and we're kind of getting shaken down.
We feel we've offered a fair price. We've come to this point.
Fifty thousand dollars over.
Yes. We've come to this point.
Fifty thousand. No.
Fifty thousand, no, we've offered fifty thousand dollars, the profit would be whatever the difference is between fifty thousand and what they paid.
Fifteen.
Yes. We've come to the eminent domain process because we feel that this is the best course for the county. Obviously, you see the public health concern on the, you mentioned what you had seen, so my feeling is that this is the best course of action for the county. I don't think we'd all be standing here if we didn't feel that that was the case.
So was either side appraised at any point in time?
Not, we know comparable values right now. I'm not an appraiser, but I know what the comparable values are. The houses are around sixty thousand dollars, and the highest comp that we have seen is sixty thousand dollars on that block.
But when a house goes to auction, or a bank owns it, do they not?
The bank actually, at the sheriff's sale, the bank probably did what they normally do if they have an interest in a property. They offer one dollar plus costs, and then the bank owns the property from the sheriff's sale. At that point, the mortgage, I think Mr. Taylor said that he had gotten, the number through Mr. Lobzak was eighty-five thousand dollars. That was the mortgage price that was left over. They put it up on auction.com, and the bank took that fifty thousand dollar loss. And then we came in, and we've been, we were offering, we had started out even price, which was accepted by the attorney, and then, no, we needed more. At that point, we offered, Mr. Taylor offered more money, we offered up to fifty thousand dollars. Once we had a deal in place, of course, we would come to a council, we'd get the appraisals, and we'd ask your permission to bless it. And that's how I thought the process was going to go.
Because their legal team had said that they would accept the fifty thousand.
They would accept less than that, actually, the thirty-five thousand. We would have even paid the closing costs, and they would have just walked away with the check.
Mr. Dan is the original attorney.
May I?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
May I ask, are you still? Go ahead.
I just want to know, what turned that around?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. Like I said, I, he made that demand, I quickly got approval from the administration, I filed back a letter, we'll take it, I will show up, I will, we'll show up at the closing, we'll do an assignment, I'll take the property on behalf of the county. I guess maybe he went back to his clients and realized they wanted more. I agreed to pay more. I moved, like I said, I moved to forty-one, I moved to mid-forties, I moved to fifty. I was moving and moving, you know, I, yeah, I wanted them to not suffer because of loss. And I didn't want to just take their property for nothing. And so the council was willing to give, and willing to negotiate. And so I had abrupted the fact that we were willing to sell ours, and I gave them that amount as well, there was no counter to that, I was willing to give my half, there was no counter.
If I may, if I may, I got a few things here. First of all, some nights go smooth, and some nights, it's like when I had my MG and I would hit speed bumps back in the day, and this is one of those nights apparently. Sort of have a couple things here. I mean, first of all, to go to the comment of eminent domain, we get into that issue where we have, the government has the right, but we have the responsibility, it's not so much what we can do, it's what we should do, and we can declare, let's be honest, we can declare a lot of things as in the best and the common interest. And frankly, myself, going forward, I think that it's not a bad idea. But now that you spoke, I have some concerns, and one is, I did, Mr. Parsons took me through the property that we owned, and there's no question that, I don't know how the city let us get away for two administrations without fixing that hole in the roof. I don't know how long that hole's been there, but I could only get about a foot inside the doorway, and I said, wow, this is bad news if you have any kind of allergy. I mean, that thing is a wreck, it's a mess, the side we own. Now, the other thing, though, is, as far as the law goes, I mean, whatever we say, if he's an investor, a speculator, he's, they're private citizens who got in and made the bid. Somewhere, we, how did we forget? I mean, you were following it, but then somehow, when it ended, they had the highest bid. Did we have a limit where we would go up to, but they went above ours, and that's what happened? I mean, how did we get jumped if we were an active participant in the bidding?
I can't explain what auction.com, how they operate.
But shouldn't we invest it? Shouldn't we been really on top? See?
It's not like eBay.
It's something where like sometimes, and I think without the, I'll be honest, without the, I didn't realize, we didn't have a appraisal, because it seems like we're jumping steps to get to council, say, please do this, this is what we want to do, without crossing a few t's and dotting a few i's.
I don't know that we can get an appraisal unless.
We can't, so we can't get an appraisal, we cannot get an appraisal on the half we don't own unless we can go in.
But it's on the tax rolls.
No, it doesn't, we can't go into the house, we can't go.
Oh, no, I know what you're saying, you can't, but the tax, the tax rolls has an assessment amount, I should say.
It does.
And that, from that, you can derive a market value.
Not always.
Well, again, we're talking about taking property. I don't care if he's a speculator, I don't care what he want, if he wanted to live in it and raise ten kids, the point is, he bought it, he got in front of the line and got it from us, and I'm not opposed to taking property from somebody, but as Attorney Taylor was talking, I mean, it sounds more and more like we just sort of figured, you know what, he's gone to a point where, and I understand what Mr. McClure is saying, that we're not going to spend any more than this, so now we have the right to take it from him, and I, I mean, you know, I, my gut, that bothers me, I guess we can, is, and parking is parking a great major reason for us to employ eminent domain, and I'm still pondering that in my head, but I mean, I just have an issue with some of this, I don't understand, now I don't understand it, I thought I did, now I don't.
So we received a long email, Mr. Taylor received a long email from Mr. DeLuzio and Mr. Elias, Sunbless Holdings, and this is the last, "In closing, we will state our property is not for sale, and no offer less than eighty-five thousand for our property will be considered. Additionally, any agreed-upon sale would also include relocation for Mr. Lobzak." There's a state statute that under condemnation, there's a certain amount of money you have to pay for relocation. We'll do that, we'll do that, and I'm offering them right now eighty-five thousand dollars for their property.
We're sort of sitting here, I got all kinds of hands flying up. Mr. Lot has been sitting patiently, Mr. Lot.
Well, I would like to make a motion to table this. I think the administration and the residents, the owner, needs, we need to hash this out a little bit more. Hopefully, you know, hey, we dropped the ball, and we got bit a little bit on this one, but anyway, I'm making a motion to table this.
Hold it, stop, timeout, timeout, everybody. A motion has been made to table.
I'll second.
There's a second by Ms. Hefner. There's no discussion, no debate, call the roll. Call the roll.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes, no.
Ms. Zierinski?
No.
Mr. Kusick?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
I'm going to, I admit, I'm sorry, I'm confused right now. I'll just have to say yes, because I am confused.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of five to four.
All right, it's tabled, maybe we can bring it up at the next meeting. I just, I'm sorry, I'm confused. The issue got muddy, and, I mean, if it's eminent domain.
I understand, we met their price.
No, you did, and I mean.
So we met their price, their speculation paid off, and we could have resolved it tonight, but I suppose, I suppose that we'll have to continue to deal with the problem as we move forward.
I hope that.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. Guys, I'm sorry, but he's up speaking, and there's questions. No, did you hear what he said, though?
I think.
Mr. McClure made a statement.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty clear here in the administrative code that appraisals need to be done here before this action be taken. I think that this was either an oversight, I know that it can be waived, but this, it's not like, usually, we waive it if it's a thousand dollars or a couple hundred dollars. Now, this could be anywhere between, you know, thirty-five and eighty-five thousand dollars. I don't think that's worth waiving the appraisal for, so that's my concern, that we're talking about waiving or not even doing an appraisal, and that's what called, what is called for in the administrative code.
It's protocol, that's all.
Well, I mean, this, we had a vote, and I would just say, and we, there's no discussion on what we did in the vote, but I mean, I would hope that, I believe in property owners' rights. Having said that, I do know people at times will speculate with their governments to make money, and I think that at times, that does work, but I believe that, you know, there is a limit to what we, what we're willing to do. And I think the executive, though it was after the vote, made what I consider probably a limiting speech, as far as I'm concerned, but.
I think that we could have reached an agreement tonight, and I think that's why I voted no. I feel like this would be better resolved, not through condemnation, but through agreement, and I feel like Mr. McClure, county executive, offered a generous amount, and they were willing to take it, and I hope that in between now and the next time this comes in front of us, that that agreement can be made, because I think it's mutually beneficial.
So.
Go ahead.
Us doing this should not preclude them from coming to that agreement between now and tabling it.
It doesn't.
No. I mean, we tabled it, but doesn't mean they can't talk. I mean, I think the executive was trying to resolve it, but this is a tough place at this point in time, I get his original thing, but, you know, that's what they wanted. If that's what they want, hopefully, they take it, and this will be resolved, and we can pull it off the table, and we'll vote on it. We did, we voted, we already had the introduction, so what it's going to take is a public hearing vote, which can happen at the first meeting in December, and hopefully, we'll have something to vote on. Is there any other? Old business? Seeing none, new business. We have an introduction of an ordinance. Introduction of an ordinance amending the 2019 Northampton County budget. Would someone sponsor this?
I will.
Ms. Hefner, second, Ms. Zierinski. Ms. Hefner, second, Ms. Zierinski, a public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the November 21st meeting. That's true, we can do this at the November 21st, not the 1st of December, as far as those guys are concerned. All right, my vote should not mean that I am against taking the property, I just want to make that clear, but I understand the rights of owners.
We're too past that, we're moving on.
Table, table.
I'm not discussing the vote, I'm just talking, which I can do, all right, anyway, take me to court. All right, here we go, is there any other old business?
No.
No, we already went into new business.
We're already in new business, we're at the second.
We're on number two.
My bottom of my MG is really dented up after tonight.
Okay.
Introduction of an ordinance entitled, "The Ordinance of Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton to Lease Approximately 26, 2,650 Rentable Square Feet of Space Identified as 1710 Butler Street, Easton, Pennsylvania, from James, James S. Garfalo, 1700 Northampton Street, Easton, Pennsylvania, District Court 3-2-12." Will somebody sponsor this?
I'll sponsor it.
Ms. Zierinski, is there a second?
I'll co-sponsor.
There we go.
Ms. Hefner, all right, debate, possible vote at the November 26th, first meeting. Consideration of Lehigh and Northampton County's Local Share Grant for the Coroner's Office. Mr. McGee left, he was going to introduce this, so, go ahead, Ms. Zierinski.
Be it further resolved that the applicant, does hereby designate Director of the Department of Community and Economic Development, Tina Smith, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the County of Northampton and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant, and the grant was for Lehigh and Northampton County Local Share Account Grant of up to $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a LowDoc's Full Body Digital Radiographic X-Ray Imaging Device.
Thank you, I have a question on this one.
For the dead piece?
I think you need it.
There's almost the option of not running for council. All right, so here's the thing, when did, Mr. Lysic, is he here, did he leave?
He's here.
Oh, Mr. Lysic.
Nobody called him anywhere, so he's here.
I'm sorry.
He called Mr. Lysic.
No, I'm sorry, this is for the coroner's office.
Yes, sir.
And you're applying for a, a grant?
Yes.
Now, this came to us late, and that seems to be more of a habit than, than, than for our schedule than the, the exception, I heard there was a timeframe.
Yes, and, and I apologize for the, that coming to you late, I'm very sorry about that, we have to have this submitted before the 15th of November, and that's why it was imperative that it be addressed at this meeting, and again, I apologize.
When was the origin date of making this available, that you were aware of it?
There were a number of grants that we were looking at, and, and still are, and I got mixed up on some of the dates, and, and that's why, what the delay was.
I just, I, at some point, and I know we're going to be blamed for, oh, you're losing the county money, or this, or that, but I mean, some of these things get to us, where it's like, if you don't vote tonight, you're losing money, it's got to go, and I kind of believe that sometimes, some of these grants are in somebody's hands long before the deadline comes to get stuff to us, so that we have more time, but.
Yeah, they, they were not in the hands of economic development, there was ongoing discussions, and, and quite honestly, it's, it's no excuse, it's just that the, the volume of work.
Well, you're not the only one, I mean, this has been happening a lot, so, all right, thank you, that's all I have, anybody have anything else?
No.
All right, any discussion, call for the vote.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yeah.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I'm continuously looking at additional grants, and my goal really is to try to secure as much grant money as possible, I, I think that's.
I think that's an admirable goal, I'm just asking, as far as council, like, just like every other branch, we have parameters we try to meet, and we just ask for a certain level of respect, even if we don't deserve it.
I meant no disrespect by that, and, I would.
All right.
Do better in the future.
That's, it's, believe me, Zach, it's not on you, all right, okay, next is consideration of the Community Investment Partnership Program Grant Awards Resolution, Mr. McGee is not here, so Ms. Zierinski's taking his role.
I'll do it. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the County of Northampton, one, that the attached fiscal year 2019 SIP grant project recommendations for funding is approved by Northampton County Council, two, that the county executive of the County of Northampton is authorized to execute grant agreements with the applicants, not to exceed the approved amount for each grant.
Thank you, any discussion?
No, I think we discussed this before, right?
Call for the vote.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yeah.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business?
There's the.
Do you want to, all right, well, make your new business?
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the sum of $1,500 shall be transferred from the 2019 contingency account, number 05000-76050, for the industrial hemp ad hoc committee symposium. We discussed this extensively at the economic development meeting.
Is there any discussion for Ms. Zierinski's $1,500 that's going some places for him? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yeah.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, any other new business? Seeing none, council committee reports. None? No, everybody just get out of here. All right, council liaison, Mr. Lot.
Courts and Corrections, I attend a monthly prison advisory committee, board, rather, usually, we just go over grievances, and, you know, we have a very good checks and balance in, in, in our prison, I mean, they have the in-house grievance, and then we bring outside citizens in to hear the grievances, and walk through and talk to the inmates, and see if they have any issues, and then they, they go over the warrant, and so it's, we really do have a, a, a very good extensive grievance process for any of our resident inmates. That being said, it's not always a joyful board to sit on, but I was able to go to something that was, well, let me start by saying, our prison offers a lot that most prisons don't, we have workforce development in there, we do a lot to try to get these people ready to return to, to, to our community, and, and if we're going to not pay for them to be back again, we have to put some investment in when they're, and we have been doing that, and I'm proud to say that as, as a person, and the other thing that was very, brought a lot of, I don't know, I won't even say joy to, joy to me, is I, I attended a, a appreciation dinner for the, for the volunteers that volunteer in our prison, I was shocked to learn that there was, you know, about 150, or it may even have been more than that, volunteer, from, everything from, you know, helping people with, with, with resumes, to religious issues, and, you know, just, and, and, and at that time, every year, this is the first year I was able to attend, and, and every year, they give an award out, and it was very touching, there was a woman, I believe her name was Mrs. Santos, that received the award, she's been, she's been volunteering in this prison for 25 years, she was an immigrant from Puerto Rico, she came up here with her family, got a, a job at Lehigh University, and right away, started giving back to, to our community and society, and, and, you know, I think everybody from the county exec, to everybody I attended, was, was quite impressed with her, and she was very moved by, by doing the award, so, even though today's been filled with a lot of conflict, you might say, but, you know, there's a lot of great stuff out there that happens in our county, and we can't lose sight of that, and so, I just wanted to report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Lot. As Harry Truman said, if you want a friend in politics, get a dog, I adhere to that very strongly, go ahead.
So, I attended the Farmland Preservation Board meeting on Tuesday, number, November 5th, at 7:00 PM, and to this date, 16,690.69 acres has been preserved on 200 farms, we did celebrate that 200th farm, we recapped that, and we came up on the seven-year recertification of the program, and as I stated before, in the previous meeting, that they added a hemp amendment to allow, it has a specialty crop in the statement, it's a crop unique to the area, and it can be commercially grown on preserved farms. The other thing that we discussed was, I mean, besides all the farms on the list, was the gum farm, which is, right now, was on the 2017 list, and it's currently owned by the township, I believe more township purchased, but they're trying to preserve it, and it's, it's been a difficulty in terms of who's going to help them, either the county or wildlands preservation, so that might be something that comes before us at some point in time.
Yep. Any other liaison reports? Seeing none, council clerk report?
Nothing.
Solicitor?
No.
All right, that's it, make your motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
I am.
All done, thank you. Oh, God.
I saw it. I knew exactly what was happening.